Marsha Martin, City Council.
Susie Valvo Ferri, Mayor Procham.
Shakira Yapo, City Council.
Joan Peck, Mayor.
Sean McQuay, City Council.
Aaron Rodriguez, City Council.
My Harold Dominguez, City Manager.
Eugene May, City Attorney.
Diane Chris, City Council.
Don Keaton, City Clerk. No, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to get in the roll call. So, let's also remember that this is a discussion among the councilors and not to pull staff into the conversation because if you need a one-on-one with them later, they're available. So, let's just start with you, Marsha, some true.
Okay, well, I only have two to really discuss because, because I was out of state. You know, I skipped the board meetings, okay, because I was doing family stuff. But, the two, the most active boards that I have are the Water Board and the Senior Advisory Board. And they both have one big topic that was, took up most of the discussion of the last thing, and they both are policy matters. So, Senior Advisory Board, there's really a lot less discussion in terms of council policy, although, you know, one of, one of the issues with it is that this is, this initiative by the Senior Citizens Advisory Board is, is coming after budget time and, you know, I guess, it's, you know, they need to be ready to start this in April for 2025. But, they have succeeded in recruiting new people, you know, we'll confirm them tonight, so, I guess, I don't think it's possible when any of them didn't get confirmed. But, anyway, a much more, people joining will be much more diverse and connected to different communities than has happened in the past. It's pretty, pretty, pretty much, it was like, you know, mostly old white women like me and a lot of other people, but this year, we have a, an African-American man joining us who is very active as a volunteer in the community as well, and, and a bilingual Hispanic woman. And, like I said, they're not confirmed yet, but we're really excited. And the big deal, the big initiative that the board wants to have is, how do we engage the rest of the community? Because really, the Senior Advisory Board, you know, it spends a lot of time looking at who the users are, and the, the users of the Senior Center don't represent the whole community. They represent maybe half the community and maybe not the half of the community that could benefit the most from what the Senior Center does. So, one of the big ideas, and this is the after discussion thing, one of the big ideas was that almost everyone said, and that's why I was asking those questions on the, on the weekend, that if, there could be open times at the Senior Center, like Saturday morning or a couple evenings a week, that different parts of the community could use, make more use of the Senior Center, and make more use of the building, you know, it's a really wonderful, nice, inviting building, and, and it's high to waste than only being open, you know, forty-two hours a week, or how much it's, how much it's open. So, the staff and the Senior Advisory Board are really very much interested in, in trying to find ways to do that, and we understand that it's a, a long budget planning thing, but it'd be great if in 2025, we had not only more universal programming for the Senior Center, but more accessible hours for the Senior Center. So, that's the one. The other thing, this was, was just Monday, yesterday, was that Ken Housen actually called me in advance to, so that I could be prepared to talk to the board and the staff about this, because they know from numbers that are coming in, that we are going to need to raise the fee lieu for water rights for future annexations. And, the staff and pretty much kind of the board were sort of thinking, well, we knew, know what these new expenses are, our work is done, you know, and so, we had kind of a big discussion about all of the policy factors that really influence where we really do set that. Obviously, we don't want, we don't want the fee lieu to be at a loss, except possibly, possibly to subsidize affordable housing, but for commercial builders, we don't want it to be a loss. But, there's also all kinds of other factors, like how much we want to bring builders in, what adjacent communities are charging, and how many more parcels there are. Two big annexed, then how deficit, how, how big of a water rights deficit we have, and how big a pool of, of annexed land that hasn't paid their fee yet because they haven't broken ground or, or, you know, achieved a plaque. So, there's a, a really big chunk of data analysis that has to be done, and yes, the council will make the policy decisions about where we set that, but we need to have a full set of quantitative data presented to us in order to make that decision informed, because those of you who have, were here long enough, at this point, it might just be me and Joan.
Could be.
But, you know, the last time we had a big step in the cost of water to be, oh, and Erin, you were there, sorry.
I'm trying to even mention and remember.
Oh, Erin, Erin definitely would remember, but the public said, what? You guys are leaving all kinds of money on the table, you know, so they held us to account, and we had not enough data, and we had to send the decision back to the staff in order to get the rest of the data. So, the idea was, let's, next year, let's get it right first time, so that we can have a good discussion.
Great.
So, those are the two newses that I have, and on this one, again, it would, this might be a good time to discuss how we, as a new council, feel about that policy.
Yeah, but not tonight.
No, not tonight for law, you know, although.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we need the data, and the, and the true policy discussion, of course, needs to be had in public, of course, but.
Thank you, that was, that was good. Lot of information.
Yeah, so, for me, the, the two big ones that I want to report back are the Library Advisory Board and the Museum Advisory Board. So, the museum, we met, we're not meeting this month, but last month, so I have to pull up my notes from last time, and really, it was just looking, you know, updating the advisory board on the, how much they had raised. So, as of November sixth, it was six point five million that was raised for the Capitol Campaign, and that was prior to the Colorado gives, so we'll get updated numbers the next time we meet. So, that was, you know, that's, that's exciting news. But, you know, one of the things in kind of piggybacking off of what Marsha had said, so we had to cancel, I think it was our, our October meeting, for lack of coram, and, you know, we have one woman whose health, I mean, she ended up having to resign from the board because of health concerns, and, you know, just kind of trying to.
Is that library or museum?
Museum, Museum Advisory Board, so that was, I was referring to the Capitol Campaign, which is the extension of the Museum Advisory Board, from the museum.
Just clarify.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. And so, that had been kind of, you know, getting people to show up, as well as, you know, we have on field seats, so if one person's gone, that's, you know, we, we can't meet for lack of coram. And so, you know, really, how can we get people more engaged in this, you know, applying for the museum, library, you know, different boards, I heard you say this before, and so we were kind of, you know, kind of mulling around, you know, I had made the suggestion, the library board, we do hybrid, we have one member who's, has daycare issues, so we've made accommodations to have a hybrid, and that seems to be working, we haven't had to cancel meetings, and people are able to participate. Last night, I was able to participate online, because I'm still all, yeah. So, that was, you know, that, that was helpful. The consensus of the board, of the museum board, was to not do that, to keep it all in person, so, you know, we're kind of, kind of mulling around, how can we get the word out there for people to apply and be engaged in this, in this work, and the importance of these advisory boards? So, that was a big discussion for that. Library Board, we met yesterday, and again, you know, we have, they gave us that resolution, you know, really holding the city council and the city to, to make that commitment. We've said that we value the library, so, you know, where's, where's the money to kind of support that? And, you know, it was very, I mean, I hear over and over again, the members are very disappointed with the outcome of the election, and, you know, people don't realize the importance of the library, and the fact that our programs are free, you know, and so, one of the discussions we had was, okay, then charging for some of these programs, and, you know, the board was kind of split on that, because we really want to have this be an inclusive, equitable system for, for our residents, but these things cost money, and then to throw it on the Friends of the Library, where their whole purpose was to provide extra programming, not the essentials. And, so it was, we had some hard discussions last night, and, you know, it was really, you know, and a lot of them came on me, and it was like, well, you know, where's, you know, you say you, you are committed to the library, city council says they are committed to the library, where's the money to show that? And how are we going to make up the deficit because of, you know, I'm waiting for all those free market people to start cutting checks, so we can start building Friends Library, but, that's, sorry. So, you know, we kind of, they're, they're going to be coming to council more often, they're going to be making their, their voices heard, and, you know, our biggest concern is that we lose quality people. We have Lilian, who does the bilingual, a lot of the youth programming, and I just, she's a one-man powerhouse, and she's going out there to all these different events and running these programs at the parks and the Parents Involved in Education monthly, where, and I've been involved with PIA, the Padres de Voto Bravos en Educación, and I've been involved with them in the past for several years, and their daycare part, you know, they provide dinner for families and the kids that came, it was a daycare, it was just babysitting. She is really upped in to provide quality program. So, we have really quality staff, but they are, they are stretched really thin, and so that was, that's the concern of the Library Advisory Board, is how are we going to ensure that we keep these, these staff members who are high quality, and am I not stretching them too thin, but still keep these quality programs available for public? So, that was, you know, that was kind of the gist, I mean, we can go into more discussion later.
All right, so, we were, I was in Atlanta for LDDA, so I missed that one, and the next one is tomorrow, actually, it's usually the fourth, so, anyway. Transportation, and I thought we were starting our new boards next year, but I end up going to Broomfield, seven-thirty in the morning for that NATA, or N A T A, what is it?
Northern Area Transportation Association.
Yes, so, I showed up to that, and.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was very informative, although half of it, I didn't know what they were talking about, I mean, it's transportation, but, you know, some of the things that they had already discussed prior, basically, just continuing on, they really, definitely going to continue the Ziro Fair for youth, and they're looking at, oh, they were talking about legislative, those who are going to, to change legislation, and about the employees, like the bus drivers and everything, who are getting assaulted, and when they press charges, nothing happens to the, those who, suppose they don't get prosecuted, and so, that's an issue with their staffing, because people really do not want to be, want to work, because they're scared of people assaulting them on the bus, so, and assaulting their operators, so that's a huge, huge issue right now, which is, of course, employees, staffing. And the next meeting is next month on the twenty-fifth, so, since I went to that, and that's just a little bit of what, I was like, wow, I didn't, I didn't know that. Check on their RTD website, they have like six different, everything is in six different languages, so I thought that was pretty cool. So, yes, I'll switch on over to our transportation, basically, and Diane, if anything I miss you were there, so you can definitely update, or, Shakira, can you forget that? So, we talked about the year-end report, the 2024 work plan, of course, it could be adjusted and modified, but that's also, that's on the website, and that's a huge report, so I don't need to go over that. They talked, they talked about, we talked about the Main Street safety improvements, and the Kaufman Street multi-modal improvement project, everything is up to date, I mean, everything is on the move. More grant, I believe we got another grant from, Phoebe had gotten some more money. That's Phoebe, I tell you.
Yeah, let's go get her.
Yeah. Basically, they just provided all the updates for the multi-modal capital projects. Housing and Human Services, last, my last day was Thursday, right after Sister Cities, because I would go to Sister Cities and hop on over to, and Human Services. What we talked about in there was, over a million dollars were requested for funding, and applications, and every year has increased, and so, what we talked about possibly, that maybe they, you know, you know, we have our different buckets of what are priorities, maybe we need to narrow down the priorities, not being so broad, because there are other nonprofits who are already doing some of that work, that provide those services, and is it worth the time for nonprofits to only, although they gave people a little bit of money here and there, so if you give a thousand dollars here, two thousand dollars there, but yet they're asking for twenty-five thousand, was that worth their time for, for, you know, especially the grassroots organizations, was it really worth their time to do that application, and that thousand dollars, because that person wage costs more than that for them to sit there and do those applications, and the reporting that comes along with that? So, basically, that's what they were talking about when I came in the latter part of it. Sister Cities, they still need maybe a few more students to go, they left it open for a few more students for Arapahoe, Guzman, and I think we're full for Japan. I myself would be a chaperone for Japan this, next year, I'm to, I'm so excited. They asked me that I want to go as a government official, because they get a lot of perks, and I said, well, if we all can't get perks, then no, I don't want to, because I want to experience what the students experience, so, if it's a great experience that they get all the perks that I get, then that's cool, but I don't want to be separated from the kids, I want to learn, that's the whole point of me going as a chaperone. So, we don't know the exact dates of that, but we do know it's supposed to be in July. We're supposed to know at the end of this month, because their school is year-round, and so, it's when they can, they want to check and see when it would be a good time for us to be there, for their students in Japan, so, yeah.
Great.
So, Archab, and for, they had a discussion in regards to the changing, the online aspect of that, so they wanted to do it where they rotate from different places to places. So, so, for you, Diane, just so you kind of know, it's a multikind resource consortium advisory board, so that's Archab, and it's just about things like eco-cycle and other elements like our A1 composting and all of that, so, this is fairly light, I mean. Then the Consortium of Cities, the, the big issue right now, we were, we went to the actual emergency facility where, when they have something like the Marshall Fire or something like this, they have a room like three times the size of this room here, it's got six to seven or more, you know, television's larger than this one here, they've got, it's just a total command center, they have the ability to bug out of there if it were, like a, you know, a fire like the Marshall Fire were to come in, into that location, but when they were looking at things for the flood and other aspects, they, you know, they went through the whole process of, of that, and they call it a fishbone, but they showed how any incident has this sort of fishbone effect, first you do this, then you do this, then you do this, and it used to be that they wanted us, as public officials, to be all trained in this, and then they realized we just need to be aware of it, because we weren't going to be the experts behind the, the screens or anything like that, we might help in some way, and I know many of you, when the Marshall Fire hit, did certain things to help support these other communities and, and stuff like that, but it probably wasn't from a logistics sort of command and control sort of situation, so that's, that's where they were. And then they ended the meeting again with the minimum wage discussion. I sent an email on to Martha Locman, who is pushing this right now, to ask her, has she had conversations with either one of the school boards or their superintendents about this issue, because it would have an impact on, on them in the sense of raising minimum wage jobs, like some of their parapros and some of their janitorial staff and things like that, and I haven't received a response back from her in this kind of meeting. So, that's where that board is, is pretty much.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt. For, to Marsha's defense, she's had some personal issues, it has not been, it's very.
Yeah, I think, I think Mark may, might, might be handling some of this, so I, I can reach out to him and, and see what has happened, because you kind of got to include all these stakeholders in this, if you're going to start pursuing this, but they want to go down this, I still believe that it's probably a legislative issue that really probably should have, should be handled broadly, but, because it has some elements of problems in the sense that if Longmont and Lewisville and Locky and Erie and all the surrounding areas come in as a unit to, to go with this, what we might see is a bunch of people, you know, having shortages in places like Fort Houghton and, and other parts, just as you cross I-25, the people wanting to come here because they clearly get a better wage for doing the same jobs they do just on the opposite side of I-25, so that's a, that's a factor that probably should be, you know, pushed more at the legislative level, because that's kind of the same issue when we're dealing with some of the gun issues, we know that if you can't get other communities to, to get along with, and change their policies, people will just go there to get their weapon of choice. So, it's that sort of situation, too, you're creating a disparity, and so obviously, people want to, want to come where they are going to get paid, even if they have to drive a little bit, there's probably a cost savings in some of that reality. So, that's basically, I still don't know, outside of us having, holding a vote on this, I don't know where to really go forward with them on that, but I just feel like it still hasn't quite been enough information, you know, it seems like we almost need maybe some clarify, you know, clarification in regards to what that actually looks like. Are they going to want to, we really want to have sixteen-year-olds, you know, at that, I mean, there's going to be some question about on-the-job training and that sort of thing, so it's, it's a discussion to be held.
So, Historic Preservation Commission, I think we've all seen kind of the culmination of their work over the last year. Just last week, I believe, we voted on initially the, the recommendations that they made to, for the code changes, as far as demolition and those kinds of things. Tonight, we have the appeal again, and so, I think, you know, we read about that in our packets, and then also, I, I think everybody has received, I don't, you know, Councilman Chris probably hasn't received the email, but the one we got from Commissioner Jacoby that outlined what he thought the commission's decision was based on the overlay district, which I know we'll be having a conversation about that based on the motion of the mayor. And that's really taken up the vast majority of the year for that particular commission. Longmont Public Media, you know, they're, they've gotten to the point now where they've added so much program, so many programs to try to get as much participation and memberships and things like that, that they've gotten to the point now where they're, they're starting to reevaluate and see maybe if some of the programs need to be leaned, just, you know, for capacity reasons, and maybe there's not the uptake of, of participation they were anticipating, but I think that was kind of the right direction, was open up the cornucopia of possibilities, and then see what really is the popular stuff, and then, you know, pare back the stuff that didn't, didn't necessarily become as popular. And then with Planning and Zoning Commission, I think they, after the Bonfarm sessions, I think they got a little bit of a break, I mean, they, they had meetings, but they were not as contentious, I, I know that one was the Boston Road just by the Sugar Factory, that was one that they already came to us, and then they wished upon farewell to Commissioner Josh Goldberg, who had been there ten years.
Wow.
He had his two five-year terms, and he was terminated, so.
What do you have for us, Diane?
Well, I dropped in with Visit Longmont, and we're starting our first meeting tomorrow, so I'm with you on that, or it's not as early in the morning, but, and I learned some things about the airport during our interview process that I think Visit Longmont will be interested to hear, because there's some reasons to come here, just because of that airport, and that also in interviews related a bit to the Transportation Board, which I was publicly invited to, to be heard there, because they're talking about having electric bicycles, bicycle stations around town, and we are, we mentioned that they might like to have that available today. So, and then the thing with the master planning for transportation, that a lot of it with RTD is going to go more regional, sort of try to focus on microtransit, just my conversations with the city, I realized that we may be getting close to microtransit, so, yeah, so there's a lot of look at the budget about that, too, transportation dollars, to make sure that we support that, a lot of excitement for microtransit.
So, before I, Don, would you want to tell the rest of council what you said about the historic Longmont, that presentation, or that?
I will let the planning staff introduce what I believe that that is, they're going to request postponement tonight, we'll see.
We were, they notified today.
Yeah, late afternoon.
Late afternoon that the applicant is.
Delayed on that, sorry.
Delayed, had a flight delay and can't be here, and so we're requesting to continue.
So, my turn, I had four things that I was going to bring up, but I think I'm going to start with only two, and if four don't make it, that's fine with me. Remember my password. The first one is the ethics code, I, I did have a meeting with Eugene, which I canceled because the campaign, I needed to take something off my plate during the campaign, so that left. However, during that time, after the campaign is over and today, I did meet with Marika and Ian. and Ian from IT and we discussed, and they gave me a draft of what a website for complaints would look like, so that we had a place to direct people to go if they had a complaint about a councilperson or a board member or commission member. And I will have that draft ready for, in January, and Suzie has agreed to help me with that. So when she still wants to agree to helping with that, I will throw a draft to her, to WordSmith to look at, to make sure that it all makes sense as far as we know, and then it goes to legal. And then it comes back to council to tear apart or look at, see if you want to work with it or change it or whatever. The one thing that IT needs before they can, we can actually go on that website is we need to know who the committee would be. And Harold and I have talked about a hearing officers for who's going to look at complaints, who did it go to, et cetera. So that's just an idea that we'll discuss, but that is what I will present because I would rather, in previous, pre-sessions Diane, it was agreed that I could just do it. And I asked if anybody wanted to help and they said, no, go for it. So I'm just pulling from Fort Collins Code of Ethics. She, the attorney there, gave me permission to use their language. And from Denver's Code of Ethics and a little bit from Colorado Springs, so it's kind of a hodgepodge. But it hits the points that I think that makes sense, but when it comes back, then we can say, that's ridiculous, or no, we don't want to do that, or whatever. So council's input's really important because it is our Code of Ethics. So that's the update on that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, I was going to update on PRPA because I think it's extremely important that we all understand what's going on there, but I'm going to leave that and thus we have time. I want to first of all go straight to RTD. And we all have read or heard that Front Range Passenger Rail got the $500,000 grant for their corridor ID plan, which is huge. We were waiting and waiting for that. We're supposed to hear about it in October and then in November, but finally in December they awarded the grants and Front Range Passenger Rail got one of them. And the reason that's important is that with that $500,000 grant, it is FRA telling us that we have a good plan, they like it, and that they will give us all the help we need to make it work. So I'm really excited about that, but that means we're going to work our tails off because the governor wants the vote for the FRPR district on the November 2024 ballot. So we're working on several things, on marketing, on ballot language. We chose the alignment from Fort Collins to Preblo or Preblo to Fort Collins, whatever you want. There's a lot of discussion about that. And there's, the reason that was chosen was because we are going to use existing rail. The cost of building another rail or, or making it a double line is very, very expensive. So getting into it right away and doing the backbone is what we're concentrating on. That is going to happen, whether we like it or not. I think it's a great thing that's going to happen for the Front Range. However, I have told at every single Front Range Passenger Rail District meeting that I am not going to sell to our residents the idea that we're going to be in two, be capped for two rail districts. I had heard at our retreat that RTD was going to be a player, but then on Monday, I had a conversation with the executive director of FRPR and they are not. So RTD is doing their own thing, Front Range, FRPR is doing their own thing, totally separate districts. To that end, my frustration is what everybody's been frustrated about. RTD refuses to move the date of the Northwest Rail Corridor from 2050, which puts that 46 years since our vote and over $100,000, 100, no, sorry, $100 million that we would have put into this. The reason they're putting it 2050 is because they have bonds that are not going to come due until 2050. They're, they don't have any more lending authority until they pay that off. But the Fast Trax is solvent, which means, I don't know exactly what that means because if we owe dollars for bonds, it means that our dollars are needed to pay off those bonds. So that is unacceptable to me completely, that we are going to be caught in two different rail districts. There's no path forward with Northwest Corridor. RTD has made no plans for construction. They haven't purchased any cheap steel and put it in a warehouse, so when we have money, we can start building. So to that end, I want your input. Shall we tonight, at tonight's meeting, direct our staff to hold an executive session to discuss an exit strategy for RTD's Fast Trax part of the district, the RTD district? Question?
I would support that if there is any possible exit strategy. And I would like a discussion about how the governor expects the RTD, the unserved segments of RTD to vote for another rail district. And I don't, given the population distribution, I'm thinking it could pass without us. So what we need to do is how much the government, governor and the legislature can intervene.
And they're working on that right now. Faith Winters, the land use bill that, that the governor put out last year, it wasn't a bill.
It was a concept plan, or it was.
Yeah, that he was going, that he was going to put on the ballot. He broke it up into three parts. Transportation, which Faith Winters, Senator Faith Winters has the land use itself and then the ADUs, the transit-oriented development part. So he's got three different sections now, which I think he's going to run. Part of his plan, I think, and at the mayor's and commissioners' meeting, Kyle, and I forget his last name, but he is the one who replaced Tracy Burnett in the legislature.
Brown.
Yeah. Thank you. He came and talked to us and basically said, he's working with Faith Winters and they don't know what they're going to do. He said, give me your input. And Faith Winters emailed me and said, give me everything, absolutely everything that you think we should do for transportation. So Phil and I just filled an email full of stuff. So they're struggling, everybody's struggling, but RTD's not going to be part of it. So, and to your point, Marcia, that is the point of the executive session, to discuss, should we do this? Can we do this?
I mean, I need the support of an executive session.
Well, I'd be in support of it, but we've had executive session on the subject, which was very promising, so.
Well, and the executive, but in that executive session in 2021, the, if I, if memory serves me right, we basically said, let's wait and see what happens. And, and that is because FRPR was just beginning. And at that point, and I'm reading, I'm wrapping this down, I have to follow notes. At the very beginning, the discussion was that we would have a three P. It would be a three-part partnership with C.FRPR and RTD. And that's why I said, let's wait and see.
I just remember the legal aspect and not about being able to remove ourselves from the ballot issue that was voted on originally being tenuous at best.
But we never gave direction to staff just to litigate.
Right. I guess I remember the conversation differently.
No, but we never came out of that executive session and said to give direction to litigate or not to litigate.
Right, because I remember the conversation differently in the sense that in a red light, green light, or red light, yellow light, green light concept, we were nowhere close to a green light from a litigation point. That was my recollection of that conversation, but.
Okay. So I guess I want to know if I should make this a motion tonight?
I would support it, you know, given that, the, the two things have changed, right? I remember that executive session as being, well, me as a municipality or even as whatever, District 11 or 13 or whatever, and we are to be, you know, even as that entity, we have no power to exit.
Didn't have standing.
Yeah, we had no standing. And so.
I think you might cancel those conversations, they're confidential.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it was in the executive session.
It was in an executive session. So anyway, we, I think we decided there was nothing we could do at that point. But we would need the support of the legislature or.
Can we, can we talk about this in an executive session?
Yes.
That's the whole point.
Okay.
This discussion should be happening here.
So I'll support it.
Yes, I'll support it outside. Welcome to the discussion.
The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about is PRPA, just as an update.
The what? Sorry, I didn't hear.
PRPA.
Oh.
We had gotten, and I don't know if all council got these, but the board got hundreds of letters from groups like Sierra Club, 360.org, et cetera, that are not happy that for reliability on PRPA for our dark calm days, that we are going to have aerod derivative gas turbines. They don't want any gas at all. And they said, we need, instead of putting out an RFP just for technology, just for an aerod derivative turbine, we need to have all source RFPs, which means that we would put out a request or proposal or bids, information from all sources of storage and natural resources that could give us the reliability we need on dark calm days. So this was a question, this was a good discussion that we had on PRPA. And to tell you the truth, the, the board members learned a lot because information came that we had never had before. And between 2020, 2020 and 2023, PRPA had actually put out four all source RFPs with 71 responses. So they had information and responses on those RFPs from all kinds of manufacturers that were doing storage, that were doing solar, that were doing wind, that were doing hydroelectric. And our staff went to some of these manufacturers, to some of these companies, and actually looked at their, what they were producing. And out of that, there's one that we're still keeping an eye on, and that is the one in California that is developing 100-hour storage units, but they're nowhere near what they should be for us to use. So in order for us not to have blackout days, for us to be able to be in our manage, management like WISE and the Southwest Energy Pool, we have to be able to have the energy that we can sell and buy from other energy utility companies within that pool. So out of those RFPs, those all source RFPs, tame the aerod derivative gas turbines. So we had a memo, we, we signed an agreement to give permission to PRPA to start the, what is the word?
Permitting process.
The permitting process, which is taking a very long time. The other thing that I learned is that we are a very small utility company. So when we need to purchase something, it is now supply and demand and the manufacturers have all the power because the demand is worldwide. We're very small, so if we need turbines, if we, whatever it is we want to purchase, we're coming up against Excel, who is purchasing a lot of them, or like Arizona Public Service Company, which they're buying tons of it. They don't want, we're, we're on the bottom of August because we're small. We're only four cities. So that is what is holding up some of our moving forward, our momentum to move forward. So I think that the public needs to understand some of this when, if you hear that we're not moving fast enough, that we're not doing our job, we're, I totally have faith in what PRPA is doing. And we're having more in-depth conversations on the board and not just, just questioning staff in a deeper, more meaningful way for us. So that's it. Those are my, that's it. That's a lot, guys.
I'd like to add something about PRPA. Having talked to the local activist community and 360, 350.org and, and the Sierra Club going bonkers over new gas plants. But if you talk to Enrel or if you talk to, you know, the federal regulatory agencies or anybody who does not have an ideological thing behind them one way or the other, and Enrel is really pretty much gung ho behind renewable energy. But PRPA is right and 350.org, et cetera, are asking for more. So I personally, you know, with, with my clean energy industry experience, I have no quarrel with what PRPA is doing at the moment. Think they're doing the right thing and the no new gas ask is just not attainable with present-day technology, not by 2030.
No, isn't there?
So I thought, you know, because what's going to happen, I can tell you that, in fact, the way they had that set up, that if you were on the PRPA board, you didn't get those letters. Because I didn't get them as a, as a council member. But that's the next thing, right, is that they'll send them to the whole council.
That's why I wanted council to understand what we're doing and where we're going so that you can support the city and support PRPA's path. The other thing I forgot to say is that Ginny, who, Ginny is the mayor of Fort Collins, she went to.
COP28?
Yeah, she, Dubai. She went to Dubai for the COP28 conference and came back reporting to us and said that there were people in renewable energy from all over the world and no one has an answer that we're all struggling with the exact same thing. However, at COP28, there were also hundreds of oil and gas people, so they were doing their own thing as well. But I was glad to hear that because it made me feel that, we've had people coming to PRPA saying that Austin, Texas is doing this, they're 100% renewable, and then Raj pulled up their, their whole platform of what they're using, and they're using coal and gas as well as some renewable. And they are, their target is 2035. So we are right in there and working as hard as we can, but I think our board has learned that we need to ask better questions and more questions. So.
You had a good presentation.
They have a good presentation, PRPA.
They did, really. I was very impressed with them, so.
The board did a good job, too. The last, the last board meeting, I felt that the board did a much better job of, of standing up for its several communities than it had, than I've ever seen happen before.
Well, I think what happens, and it happens on council too, is we get a presentation, but because we've discussed it in first ordinance, second ordinance, or it comes before we have the first ordinance, we understand it better and sometimes don't ask questions for the residents to understand, because we've read it, we've seen it, we've heard about it, and sometimes we go to staff and get more information. So they give a presentation and it looks like we're all just sitting there like, okay.
It's not really the truth, yeah.
No, it's not true.
So it's the same thing. It's the exact same thing, so. Okay, does anybody want to discuss anything else?
Well, I did. Just the, Monday before the, the election, I went to Hope, and Hope is struggling. They're struggling in two counts. It seems like they are, the way they described it, they might be running a deficit, and they, they're trying to figure out how to cover that. And the, and with the big, with the discussion about unhoused and homeless folks in our community, you know, and the fact that they are moving from two different churches, and the setup and the tear down every night, you know, and every morning, is, is really starting to grate on them, and it'd be nice if we could try to find some location that they could be permitted in. I think that would keep some of their costs down, and I think that's something that I know that we need to maybe either lobby our legislators and stop giving people tax credits for holding their properties out of.
The market?
Huh?
The market?
Yeah, the market. It's, it's a little ridiculous. I mean, that should not be a tax credit. That should be like, well, why are you not doing this? We built this. I mean, I see, you know, my understanding, jumping to like Dr. Cog and that sort of thing, where we have these ideas of where we should put certain businesses and, and industries, and it seems like we have, you know, corporate buildings that should be getting built, and yet I drive up I-25 and see those exact type of buildings being built new. And so if those buildings are not going to be utilized, we need to figure out some way of putting them into some sort of way, instead of some sort of aspect, and either addressing our issue around affordable housing, attainable housing, or, you know, helping the homeless and the unhoused, and, and helping organizations like Hope that are trying to find at least permanent, so that's, that's a, that's an issue right there that I think needs to be put on the front burner. I'd like to have Hope, if we could, come to a council meeting and reiterate, you know, what their, their real needs are, because it's a, it's a struggle, because they do such a good job in the community with some of the more difficult parts of, of that, that community ask, population, that, you know, we need to figure out what we can do to make that happen. And we probably need to hold some of these, these, you know, commercial buildings owners accountable for leaving these things for us to deal with. The other thing is this, it's, I'm concerned about the issue of, a year ago, before I was on council, just before I was on council, a young man got shot, 15, at Hobart and Nelson, and that attractive nuisance of that big parking lot is something that if, if they're not going to do something with it, that, you know, that's, that's on now us as a community to police and to make sure that that Walmart parking lot is, 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 you know, safe from, from, you know, impromptu, you know, meetups for racing and other stuff like that. That's, that's a problem. And, and if they're not going to put something there that deters that, you know, some sort of commercial building or some sort of activity down there that deters that, then that's putting it back on our police's safety to have to make sure that it's not, all of a sudden, we're, we're using resource, city resources, and I, and I feel like that's something we should maybe discuss about, you know, how do we claw some of that resource back if they're not going to do something serious about it? Because that's, that's not okay. We're, we're struggling here to try to make sure, you know, other issues are, of safety are, are handled, not to have to face something that should be, should have been managed literally years ago.
Can I jump in?
Yes.
So it's one of the tenements of visions, you know, is to repurpose those, those parking lots and put facilities there that will, so we don't have to build more parking lots, so we're not, so we're utilizing what already exists. And transportation has committed to not expanding any roads and to repurpose the parking lots. So the idea is, I think perhaps using city sources there, just beginning to attract other businesses as well, that maybe might be tempted to build or, you know, go somewhere else to say, let's repurpose what we have, this is a great place for it, so maybe that those initiatives, those task forces, forces will help, I think, pushing in all directions to finish it.
I think that would be a good discussion to have, especially when we, but we have to also look at the aspect that we don't own those parking lots. And if I remember right, Hobby Lobby has first refusal on that parking lot.
That's a crazy.
Crazy mess.
Property location. That's partially why it's so difficult to do anything, because there are, on one parcel, there's multiple owners. That's actually why that Walmart building's torn down, because the owners couldn't agree. And then Hobby Lobby actually has.
Should I appreciate that?
Well, they have rights on what's developed, based on the contracts that were signed between them. There is somebody that I think is working through now, developing something there, but they, we've spent time with them trying to figure out the logistics of the parking lots, and that is just a crazy location.
Well, our services to them for safety and for the safety of our community is, is not free. And they need to do something with it.
Well, I'd benefit from more, but attracted to, just to finding out what would be compatible.
I agree. Look, access to that area too, is this Gordy knot? I mean, you drive in there, you can't ever get out.
Yeah.
Especially when you want to go to that bakery.
I don't think I ever go in and out the same way.
You can't.
So we should probably start thinking about what we want to see on the retreat, because Diane's going to be asking us. Yeah, I know.